Welcome to the Johnson County Planning Board, May Edition. As is our custom, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Mr. Crenshaw to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 15th Planning Board meeting.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Crenshaw, second by Mr. Saster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, the minutes are approved. I am going to move one item up on the agenda. Item four, which is a text amendment. The applicant has requested that be pushed back to our next meeting. So I'm going to need a motion to continue that to June 17th.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, so if you're here for text amendment case 2501, and amendments to amend section 14-89, that will be moved to June 17th. Next on our agenda are subdivisions. I'll remind everyone that the vast majority of land in Johnson County is zoned agricultural residential, which means by right, you can farm it or build houses on it. Therefore, it's not the purview of this board to determine if a subdivision is appropriate for a specific area, only that it meets our codes and ordinances. Given that we are the final approval body for all subdivisions, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so we ask that any testimony that you provide be competent and relevant. And we also ask that if you are going to give testimony relative to a subdivision. So if you're going to speak in for, against, if you have questions, that you stand and raise your right hand, please, and be sworn in. Are you sure that the information that you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Alright, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. First up is a commercial subdivision. It's Coates Crossing, G H Land LLC and Elizabeth Roberts owner. Developers Castos Southeast Realty Services LLC, surveyor engineer Blue Ridge Engineering. Its location's NC Highway 210 and North Pleasant Coates Road in the Elevation Township. It's served by 5210 Fire District and Rescue Squad. It's 19.45 acres, seven lots proposed. Johnston County Public Water, public sewer. Traffic count for NC Highway 210 was 15,500 vehicles per day in 2023. This portion of NC Highway 210 appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as a boulevard needing improvement. This parcel is zoned agricultural residential, but it's also within the Interstate Highway Interchange Overlay District, which any use allowed in either of those would be an allowed use for this property.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, staff? Alright, who would like to be heard on behalf of Coates Crossing? Also, if you'll, when you address the board, if you'll give your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Grimes. I'm with Casto. I'm a Vice President of Development and Design. I live in Wake Forest at 8501 Hampton Cross. We're here to provide or offer this project for approvals. It is going to be a commercial development. There will be a regional gas and convenience store. We're also speaking with several retail and restaurants and commercial users that could go here. We don't have any leases completely set right now. We're still in negotiations. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen?
These, all these entrances are right in, right out?
There will be a leftover on the easternmost entrance. We are still working with DOT on, on the traffic engineering and design.
I guess when you, you figure out what's going in there, traffic study will have to be done.
Traffic study is underway, right?
Underway now, okay.
Other questions, gentlemen?
Is this a stubout for future development, or?
It's a stubout as required for connectivity, but we have no control over that adjacent piece of property. It's the lay down zone for the, for the radar there, and so we, we have no intent of going over there at all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on behalf of or in support of Coates Crossing? Anyone like to be heard in opposition to Coates Crossing? Alright, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Lovering, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Coates Crossing is approved. Next on our agenda is Hookup Farm.
Yes, sir. Owner is Talman Mark Hall and Thomas Merrill Hall. Developers TMHX2 LLC. Surveyor engineer is Hall Land Surveying, Inc. Its location's 11,000 block of Covered Bridge Road, just west of NC Highway 96 North in the O'Neills Township, served by Quaranters, Fire and Clayton Rescue. It's 13.55 acres, 12 lots proposed. Johnston County Public Water, individual septic. Traffic count for this roadway, last one that was reported on the website was 2018, and it was 1,100 vehicles per day for that part of Covered Bridge Road. Covered Bridge Road appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as a boulevard needing improvement. This parcel is within the environmentally sensitive area, however, no flow plane appears on the parcel.
Alright, any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Hookup Farm?
Thomas Merrill Hall, Hall Land Surveying Incorporated, 1899 Stevens Chapel Road, Smithville 27577. I'm also the Thomas Merrill Hall that's owner of this property and the TMHX2 developer. This is mine and my brother's family farm. We just decided that we would make use of it as a subdivision and develop it. Be glad to ask any questions.
I can't tell from this drawing, do you know how far that access point is, is from the intersection?
Uh, plus or minus five, 600 feet. I can't remember the specifics.
About 400.
Have you had conversations with DOT about that driveway separation?
Yes, DOT and preliminary conversation, they're fine. They said they would issue a driveway permit for that location.
Questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Hookup Farm? Alright, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Crenshaw, second by Mr. Lovering. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, Hookup Farm is approved. Next on our agenda is Cobb Track.
Cobb Track owner Jamie and, Jamie and Amy Cobb. Developers Cloud Break Investments LLC. Surveyor engineer is Becker Morgan Group. It's in the 1,000 block of Two Clawed Road, just south of Wagon Trail in Pleasant Grove Township. It's served by the 5210 Fire and Rescue. It's 12.77 acres, 14 lots proposed. Johnston County Public Water, individual septic. Traffic count is not available for this road. This portion of Two Clawed Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This is for, there is an application in for a Phase Two that will be coming before you next month. What you're considering tonight is the east side of the Two Clawed Road. There is a four lots cul-de-sac being planned for the crossroad that will be part of this too, but it's just coming next month.
Questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Cobb Track?
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams, professional engineer with Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street in Clayton. My firm's handling the planning and engineering on this project. Pretty straightforward, like I said, 14, 14 lots. We do meet all of the, the town standards. Should we get approved, night will be moved forward with construction drawings. Realize we have to work with NC DOT for driveway permit. Don't anticipate any issues in that. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Donnie, I guess the, I'm sorry, I guess the second phase, am I right, is across the street there?
Yes, sir.
Are you, y'all lining up those driveways or roadways, or you don't know yet?
We've laid it out. They, they do not line up the property, the way the property is, it won't line up.
Where's it going to be in relation to this driveway? How far away?
Uh, that's a good question. More than likely, and this is from memory, more than likely will be to the north and about midway of that parcel across the street.
Yeah.
And there's like four lots in there.
Four lots, and it's, it's coming in from the, coming in from the, where's the north arrow? South side. It's going to be on the south property line, I guess. Be nice to get those lined up. What is the, what is the, Donnie, the small easement that is shown at the end of the cul-de-sac there, is that, is that accessing adjacent property, or?
Yes, sir. So there's a, if the aerials were turned on, basically where our roadway is, there's an existing farm path that runs through there. There's no easement tied to it. We are providing access to that, to the property behind it via that easement.
So he'll be bringing farm equipment through, or?
Yeah.
One, one thing to be aware of for the county has standards, we can't create a spike strip. A spike strip is essentially where you run the way some. There can't be a small portion of non, of non-conforming piece of land there that can't be essentially used for anything, but it keeps the right of way for abutting that. So the lot seven, lot seven and eight would have to be, would have to kind of encompass that, that cul-de-sac a little bit, and a lot line share there, and that easement exists somewhere within that boundary, but they can't create separate spike strip, and it works for county standards. Or that could extend the right of way to the adjoining property line, just to allow for future, future users of that.
Okay, there, I got you.
Other question?
Will we see that Phase Two?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anyone else like to be heard on, as it relates to the Cobb Track? Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, please. I'll get you next.
My name is Tim King. I'm 1241 Bailey Road, Coates, 27521. Actually, I'm not opposed of the development, but I'm actually inheriting the property that's highlighted there from Margaret C. King, who passed away in September 24. And I'm the only heir, I'm the only child. My concern is just what you were speaking of before, is that little 20-foot stretch that goes and is going to be used for farming, and we're very concerned about getting farm equipment through that street. I mean, from a safety standpoint, among, among the other others, I mean, obviously, equipment, potato trucks, combines, and that type of thing, we'll be going through that street. That's why that farm is currently used. I'm open to options with the, the developer, if we can move that somewhere else. Even to the point if I have to give up a little land to help offset that, I'll do that. But they have no interest in talking to me at this point, so.
Your existing access, is that dirt road up the side of the property?
Yes, sir. That's been there, but there currently is no easement on file. But that existing dirt road has been there, and I know the Johnston County aerial footage show that in 1965. And I'm sure it predates that. But that's what's been used, and I'm, I'm the fourth generation owner.
And it's about where this road is proposed, correct?
Yeah, I think it's pretty much exactly. Because obviously, there's a pretty good roadbed that's been developed over the years. So they fed that house there, that you can see. I know from the 39 footage, that house was there too, so.
Rest your property's landlot. That's the only access.
It's, it's the only access, yes, sir. And I've, I've been looking for other remedies so I could get around this, because ideally, I'd like to have the required access width if it were to be developed in the future, unless it can be tied to the existing highway that's being put through there. But the biggest concern is just accessing it with the farm equipment. I mean, there's nothing to say that cul-de-sac couldn't end up with a fence around it and leave us a 20-foot opening, that some equipment won't pass through. So this, this feels like we're getting walked off. And that's a big, big piece of property.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen?
I've got a question back for the engineer about what the developer's saying. Do you want me to wait?
Yeah, let's, let's get to other questions, and then we'll go back. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
95 Weathergate Drive, Clayton. On behalf of, I'm sorry, Cloud Break, I was just making sure if Donnie didn't cover something, I could answer something for you.
Okay.
Well, he can answer my question.
He may answer your question.
Yeah, I knew you were here. Okay, we were just talking about the easement. And I know, I can't assume this, but usually when a developer develops, they make the roads to DOT standards, so at some point, they could turn the roads over to them. So nothing's to keep a tractor or anything to go down, something that's maintained by the state anyway. But would it, would it take lots eight through 14 down too small to be able to develop? If you gave him a, and I'm just thinking here, instead of a 20-foot easement, gave him 20 feet along the back of that, so that there's not an easement on the actual, each property owner's line, and he's just got his 20 feet to get there?
Right, so with that, you're correct with the NC DOT. So whatever he's driving on to get to the neighborhood, which he's allowed to and is, is perfectly able to with his farm equipment, our road will meet that. Subgrade, depth of asphalt, the whole nine yards. So getting to that spot where he has that shorter 20-foot is going to give him better access than 20-foot across the backside. But you mentioned earlier, maybe a fence, the way this is done, if you can keep up the, so typically, you have seven and eight there. Your houses would be 45-foot off the cul-de-sac. You would not have fences put up around that cul-de-sac. They'd be from back corner of the house, the back property house. Where you would end up with a fence would be across the back property line. So if you had a 20-foot easement on the back property line, now we'd have a fence on top of it. So that's going, that's going to really limit his ability to use that back easement.
But that's why I was asking, instead of giving him a 20-foot easement, it looks like to me it would be better off for lots eight through 14, if you actually gave him 20 feet of land over. And, and just deeded it over and subtracted it from lots eight through 14 for future buyers, so when they buy it, they know what they're getting. Does that make sense? And then you don't have to pay, they don't have to pay taxes on that 20 feet, and it's not an easement anymore. I'm just asking, couldn't that be done?
Let me, Ms. Howard, Nathan Evans, 6 Ridge Drive, Clayton, North Carolina, own a development company. I'm working, Mr. Cobb, I'm working with the owners here. We don't own the property currently. We're working to develop it. So going back, April Stevens is the broker on this. I'm sure everybody knows who April is. We had her back before Christmas talk to the owner of the property behind here, and to ask, what can we do to make you happy? Because right now, the reality is, he has no recorded easement. He has no legal access to his property. He's using a 10-to-12-foot cart path, you know, and that's all he's got. We're actually doubling the size of his access and making it legal. Not only that, we're bringing a state-maintained road to within a couple of feet of his property. So if a tractor can go down Two Claw Road, it will be able to go down ours. So I had April reach out to him before Christmas and say, hey, as I do to all adjacent property owners, whenever there's an issue, what can we do to make you happy, you know, within reason, dah 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 dah. So April sent me an email that Mr. King sent her, and he asked for one of three options. And I'll read you option number three. And it's an email dated January 29th. And he said, I believe there are three options. Option number three, keep the path where it is and be 20-foot wide. That's what he asked for on January 29th. So that's what we did. The first time I heard from Mr. King was last week when he called me through Vansaws. I would have gladly, at some point in December, examined other possibilities. But when we asked him what he wanted, he gave us three options. One of them was to give him a 20-foot wide path, which is what we're doing. A week ago, I got a call that now he's not happy. I'm happy to work with him, but we can't work with him tonight. We've got a, a project here that satisfies his request, that is within all the rules and regulations, and we believe it's a good project. So with that being said, after this meeting, I'm still happy to talk to Mr. King, in spite of him saying the developer won't talk to him and see if we can work something out. But we can't put our project on hold for that, particularly when April Stevens reached out to him, and I've got it in writing back before Christmas. So there's a lot of things to that. One of them is the stormwater rules changing. We've got to get this in before the storm, as all you know. So we can't put this on pause or hold. We've either got to be approved tonight or denied tonight. And we're denied tonight, the ramifications isn't for me, because I don't own the land. It's to Mr. Cobb, the owner. What we got going in, the product we got going in here is a 3/4 million dollar product, okay? So that owner, or excuse me, the builder of that product is not going to build that if it's a stubout, because if we stub this out, he could put single-wide trailers back there. The builder is not going to buy his lots.
I wouldn't want to stub out them.
Right. And we can't give anything where it can be developed behind us. We, we are controlling that product, so it'll be a 3/4 to a million dollar product. If for some reason this isn't approved tonight, then the owner's just going to be about $300, $400,000.
Well, my reason for asking the question was twofold. Number one was, I, I figured you were going to do it to DOT standards, and at some point, it's going to be turned over to the state. So therefore, you really can't keep anybody from driving their tractor down there if state of North Carolina is taking care of the road. So really, and I can see his point as far as a safety feature. At the same time, I was thinking, well, maybe there's just something else that we could do to give him access to it. I mean, but I understand your point. I do. All because I know, I will, I would think, and I don't even know if it's in these conditions as far as bringing the road to DOT standards.
Perhaps we could have done something different, and perhaps we can, but we cannot tonight.
Right.
Because like I said, I just heard from him for the first time last week. So and as far as the farm, it will be, you know, if,
And it is in here.
Any equipment, there's also a general statute on the books which prohibits any farm equipment. I don't know if everybody knows, 1620, I brought it, 2116, which prohibits any farm equipment over 25-foot. So the reality that you might need more than 25-foot for farm equipment, that would be against the law. So again, I will work with Mr. King after this, if we can, to come up with a resolution. And as far as it being a farm and farm equipment, we're actually leaning into that. Name of the project's Cobb Farm. We're going to, you know, we're planning on split rail fencing, we plan on, the people that are buying these homes at 3/4 million dollars, they think they're living on a farm. They do. They're buying an acre, they're from wherever else, and that's a, that's a huge lot. So we're going to lean into it. The fact that a farm truck is going up and down that road is only going to help that project. Just like people buying lots in mini farms or equestrian communities, we're leaning into the farm thing. So farm equipment actually don't hurt us at all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And happy to answer any more questions should you have.
I think we're good. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Cobb Track? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Cobb, 420 Lakeview Road, LaGrange, North Carolina. I'm the actual owner of the property. That property's been in my family for, since the early 60s. The farm was recently split between me and my sister, the heirs of the property, and due to financial reasons, I have decided to develop and sell my half. As far as the easement goes, there is no easement, as they've said. It's been just a word of mouth, allowed to go through the property my whole life. I'm just going to guess that the property at the ditch, where it turns off the highway, the driveway there, is probably 14-feet wide. The easement that's been given is 20. That has been allowable forever, so I see no reason why any farm equipment here still can't go through that area. As I said, it's been due to financial hardship, taxes, and things like that, is the reason that I've decided to sell the property. If you have to answer any questions.
Questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Cobb Track? Alright, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendation was preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements of staff report.
Alright, I have one question relative to the spike strip. Can you give me a little bit more clarification on that, Mr. Nugent? Just to make sure I'm clear.
So essentially, where you see the easement, the boundary of that easement, where there has to be a property line. So seven and eight would share a property line on that. There cannot be, you can't isolate seven and eight from the end of that cul-de-sac, that right-of-way, and create a non-conforming parcel of land. Just, it's inappropriate. The, the terminology we use as spike strip is to say, I want to cut off access. You never have, you never have any access. So either, as long as they share a property line, seven and eight share a single property line somewhere along that cul-de-sac, and each one of those lots meets there, and it encompasses that full arc, that's okay. That's fine. As long as there's not, you're not just trying to cut off access for someone. Or the possibility for, there's always possibility, you could ask for the drive, the right-of-way to be extended to the property line, and it takes two, a sufficient width that would allow that right-of-way to continue to be extended onto the other property if it's developed in the future. So if you want to, I'll take a moment with this. There's two things to consider here. One, you have, yes, you do have the right, farm equipment does have to ride on DOT roads, two traverses roads. That is true, but the other aspect of this is, is safety. Obviously, you know, you know, you, you have homes in here, you're going to have children. In addition, you may have events happening at those homes from time to time, and there may be cars parked along the right-of-way, the shoulder of that right-of-way. So that's a concern as well. Ultimately, best-case scenario would be a separate, Ultimately, best case scenario would be a separate, distinct access for that farm equipment, whatever that may be. If that could be worked out between the parties, that would be optimal for all parties.
But as, as proposed, does the subdivision as proposed and as drawn meet the codes in ordinances?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so as proposed, there'll be a 20 foot wide easement off the end of public right-of-way to access the rear parcel, which we've heard testimony that is an improvement, at least in width, and certainly in terms of dedication than what there is now.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, let's say, and this is hypothetical because this is not in front of us, the parcel to the rear wishes to be developed at some point, will that parcel continue to have access to the public right-of-way through that 20 foot easement?
So develop, I mean, I would assume so, I mean, if it's an access easement, unless they're putting some, obviously that, plating that access easement does not make it legal entitlement. So there's gonna have to be a deed, there's gonna have to be a deed attached to that easement. When you talk about development, that's kind of a, that's a little bit of an open term. We're talking about a development such as this, 20 foot's not gonna be adequate, they would need a minimum of 50 feet to allow for a new, new right-of-way, whether it be private or public, in accordance with county standards, and, and then of course, if it's public, it's gotta be at least 50 feet and everything constructed to NC DOT subdivision standards, subdivision street standard.
At what point does our ordinance require a stubout?
Our ordinance does not necessarily require a stubout, it does encourage a stubout to property that is landlocked for future development or future access, in case it is developed. You do have a landlocked piece of property here, it, once again, it would be ideal to have a, to have a adequate width access to allow for future development of the property if so, if they so choose.
Okay, so it's desired but not required and the subdivision as drawn meets our codes and ordinance?
And that is correct.
Thank you, sir. All right, entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
motion approved by Mr. Sasser, second by Ms. Howard, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, Cobb Track is approved. Next is Jasper Landing Phase Two.
Yes, sir. Phase one of this project was approved unanimously at the March 2024 planning board meeting. If you look at your map, they've outlined what was approved overall in theirs for Phase One and proposed Phase Two. Owner is Jasper Landing Development Company, developer's Gray Hill Development LLC. Surveyor engineer is Mike Schneider. Location's 3457 Lassiter Road in the Elevation Township, served by Windfire District and 5210 Rescue. It's 14.99 acres, 16 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water, individual septic tanks, traffic count's not available. This portion of Lassiter, Lassiter Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement.
How many lots are on the, we're in Phase One?
Forty.
Yes.
Forty.
Would this be required to have its own dedicated mailbox as a separate subdivision? Or could the mail, mail units be incorporated into the previously approved subdivision?
I'm not sure on that, that would be a decision by the postal service. It is listed as a requirement that they have to do, that they do have to have with
Other questions, the staff? Thanks, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Jasper Landing Phase Two?
Good evening, my name's Grayberry, I'm here on behalf of the developer. My address is 516 Northeast Street in Raleigh, North Carolina. And as Mr. Moore said, this is Phase Two of a project that is currently under construction. We are actually in the process of compiling everything to get our final plat recorded for Phase One. To answer the question about the kiosk, right now, we're working with the US Postal Service, but we would like to keep all 56 mail kiosks in one location. We think that would help the overall community, but ultimately, it is up to them. So if we have to revise this a little to add a second location, then that's their call, we're kind of at their will, but our goal would be to have just one mail kiosk location. Like I said, we decided to phase this project because we pride ourselves in being very tactful in how we pursue development, and when we were kind of laying this project out, this kind of square of 15 plus or minus acres didn't really fit, there were some wetland issues, there were some soil issues, and we didn't want to just rush into it and not develop it appropriately. So that's what made our decision to come before you about a year ago with this Phase One, 40 lots, and now that we've got those built and ready to be recorded, we're here tonight to get Phase Two approved and get started on that. We've got a great building partner, they're planning a beautiful product to build in this subdivision, and we're excited to continue working in the county and happy to answer any questions that you'll have.
Any questions, the gentleman?
I just got one clarification, it's Johnston County, not Johnson County.
Oh, you mean on the map?
That's, that's my engineer, I'm gonna throw him under the bus.
That's fine.
But I'll, I'll relay the message.
Tell him he needs to cross his date.
Yes, sir.
Where's the, where's the road going? You got Phase Three?
So we stubbed that road into an adjacent parcel that we do not currently have any control over, but we've had a few lunches, kind of very high level with the farmer. You know, I'm sure everyone knows him, he's a very big, big time farmer in the area, but he has informed us that this is kind of his last farm season and he'll start winding down. We've expressed our interest in acquiring that property, but that's, we're, you know, too far to know for sure, but we thought it'd be better to have the stub and not need it than need it and not have it.
So it may become a cul-de-sac at some time?
We'll have the fire truck turn around as required, but we are optimistic we'll be able to get that adjacent parcel at some point in the future, but that, that was kind of our rationale behind that.
Other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Jasper Landing Phase Two? All right, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
motion approved by Mr. Lovering, second by Mr. Crenshaw, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Jasper Landing Phase Two is approved. Next on our agenda is Buck Crossing.
Yes, sir. Owner and developer is Double J Development LLC, surveyor engineer is Becker Morgan Group. It's in the 12,000 block of Buck Road, north of NC Highway 231 in the O'Neills Township, served by Corinth holders fire and Clayton Rescue. It's 98.11 acres, 62 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water, individual septic tanks, traffic count, last one reported on the website was 2016, and it was 580 vehicles per day for Buck Road, but again, that was nine years ago. This portion of Buck Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This parcel is not within the environmentally sensitive area. However, a flood, flood plain appears on a small portion of the parcel. A reverse drainage buffer will be required for all lots backing up to Buck Road.
Any questions, the staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Buck Crossing?
Good evening again, Donnie Adams, Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street, Clayton. Our firm's handling planning and engineering on this project. Again, this one is designed to meet the county standards, these roads are proposed to be NC DOT roads, I didn't say it last time, proposed to be NC DOT roads. We do realize that we move forward tonight, that we'll be pulling permits from NC DOT for the driveway connections and Johnston County basically for everything else for our water system, stormwater, road control. We have a couple of CBU units shown in the cul-de-sacs, I believe we're in the first cul-de-sac, I mean, excuse me, the second cul-de-sac and the last one, if you're looking at the three. I guess the second and third of the four cul-de-sacs. That being said, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Notice the 20 foot wide access easement, I think I'm reading that correctly, that's for a 10 foot wide walking trail?
Yes, that is correct.
So that each of the ends of the cul-de-sacs will be connected by walking trail, paved, unpaved?
I don't know that he's decided that he's, whether he's gonna pave it or not, I think that he would like to do that, but I don't think he's made a firm decision. He is doing upscale development, these are acre plus lots in here and he's developer and builder and...
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Buck Crossing? Yes, sir. Get you. Whoever wants to go first, just fine, go ahead, give us your name and address, please.
Diana and Sean Lewis, 299 Arabian Drive, Middlesex. Four, and I'm not, we're not opposed to the expansion of, I mean, it's something that's happening here around us, but there's four of the lots that are gonna be adjacent to our property, and if I read that correctly, there's only five feet of space that I'm gonna be given from my property line to the, to the lots, our neighborhood. We are a horse neighborhood, we are allowed to have, excuse me, farm animals. We, I, we currently run a little farm on our property, we shoot. I don't know if this is the kind of space that allows for us to continue the life that we have. We worry about, of course, children being close, coming over the fence, I mean, there's just a lot of things that concern us to have people that close to the property line, especially with the lifestyle we live out in that area.
Our, our subdivision, the Preservative Buckhorn, is a unique subdivision in all of Johnston County, I would imagine, and we moved there six years ago from the Flowers area, and actually, majority of the folks in our subdivision did the same. And, and we actually proposed, or I sent a letter about four years ago to the original owner to, to buy us at least 10 to 15 acres to buffer us from our subdivision, didn't hear anything back. I also sent the same request to Moss Yokes that was selling the property to buy about the same, to give us a buffer for our neighborhood, and no response. So from our vantage point, the biggest thing is protection of our neighborhood that was set up as a unique neighborhood in Johnston County. And five foot buffer for 60 plus homes doesn't seem common sense to us.
Okay, help me understand the five foot buffer.
Yeah, I can't find that either.
Where, where are you getting that from?
Is it on the...
I read it, I must have misunderstood what was sent to us.
That's okay, yeah, that's not something I'm familiar with, so I want to make sure
Building setbacks, I think is what you said.
Yes, the building setbacks.
Building setbacks, Johnston County, it's actually, the building setback is 10 feet, five feet for the residence, but it's 10 feet for any accessory structure off of any interior.
Well, that doesn't make it any better, really. But thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I was understanding what you, where you come from. Okay.
The other concern is, this almost 100 acres was previously a recreational area where there was hunters, a lot of hunting, and there's a lot of wildlife there. And there's Moccasins Creek behind us that has subdivisions going up, and just giving some sort of buffer for this, between our subdivision and this new subdivision, more than five or 10 feet seems reasonable.
I just feel like we're gonna lose the integrity of the area if we start piling in so many houses. We moved out to Middlesex for that lifestyle, which we absolutely love and want to keep doing and actually even better. So building a homestead, something, trying to be self-sufficient, I, I just don't know how that's gonna fit in with the big neighborhood, right? Not knowing what kind of neighborhood is coming in, what kind of folks are coming in. Again, there, our neighbors hunt on their properties, we hunt on our property, it's...
And it seemed like the Johnston County, someone mentioned that we're leaning into the, you know, the rural, you know, kind of ambiance of the county. And, you know, we're, our subdivision, we all have like many hobby farms. And, you know, it seems to be a nice, to, to take away that as an example for the county, I think, you know, just in the name of, you know, you know, building more houses seems to be, you know, at least some sort of bigger buffer essentially is all we're looking for.
In regard to the traffic, I heard that last year it was reviewed, that Buckhorn cross is awful, just absolutely awful. The school buses, as someone who commutes to North Hills in Raleigh, just the traffic there is unbelievable. People blow the stop signs all the time, there's a haunted estates that creates a lot of traffic during holidays. I think that needs to get looked at to see if it can accommodate so many homes and the cars that we're gonna be bringing in here and the school buses.
They will have to pull a permit from, or get a permit from NC DOT for the driveway connection and they look at the, the traffic flow and make sure that's sufficient.
Well, for us, it's more the, also the wildlife, as my husband mentioned, we've worked really hard at bringing it back up with everything that was demolished with the neighborhood we're in now, and we've done a pretty good job of it. Got some protected birds there in the area as well, not sure who takes care of that, but we, we have my recordings of them in the, they live right in that area as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all, yes, sir, I'll get you and then, yes, sir, come on.
Good evening, gentlemen. I heard Vanshaw, and we own 155 Thoroughbred Drive, which is gonna be on the northeast end of that, that property. It's where the arrow is, that, that lot to your left.
What was your name again?
Curtis Vanshaw.
Got it.
And Sean and Diana covered most of the things that I was gonna talk about, but one of the, it doesn't affect me really, really bad, but I see that there's gonna be a, a walking trail in there, and where that trail's going through is a very big decline. It goes from 240 feet to 180 feet, and if they're gonna put a walking trail in there, how are they gonna go about excavating that and then that runoff's not gonna come over into my land is one of the issues. They had mentioned the wildlife, and I literally hunt on those borders there, and a lot of us in that neighborhood also have shooting ranges in there, so I guess it's one of those buyer bewares, it's nothing that has to do with you people. And it's very dark there at night and we like that, because, so I don't know what their lighting situation is or what is required, but is there any, anything regarding the lights that they'll be putting up in there?
Preston, what's the requirements regarding street light?
Street lights are required, but typically it's a general mandate for the number or the spacing, but generally speaking, Duke Energy typically, there's, the contractor Duke, Duke Energy is a lamppost style light, so it's slow level light, they're not very, they're not very, it's all many, many needed, they're most 15, 15.
And last thing is regarding the schools, with 62 houses are coming in there, there was another development right down the road off of 231, it just popped, I don't know how many houses, they were in there, 40 or 50 other houses. So, you know, what is that gonna entail? Getting these kids in the middle schools, grade schools, and the high school? The high schools are already big and they've been putting trailers up to accommodate these
I understand that completely, that's the same school my kids go to school, so I understand where you're coming from there.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Graziano De Luca, I live on... Hello, my name is Graziano De Luca, I live on 1262 Buck Road, uh, Middlesex, which is actually right north on the left corner of the plan, and I have actually a 100-year floating plan right on a halfway on my land, and we had actually a lot of hurricane and tornado going through, we didn't have any problems so far, but I'm concerned about the amount of water that gonna actually go through roof, driveways and roads, that will actually create a bottleneck rather than on a, um, west side of the creek that goes through, and that gonna create more problem for my property than anything else, already contacted, because our plan, me and my wife, our plan was to sell that house in two, three years, and based on the plan that we received at home, I actually contacted a couple, um, real estate and they said that with that kind of plan, our house is basically worth zero, because that can create more flooding than what we have at the moment right now.
What, what did you say your address was?
It's a 12662 Buck Road.
Right behind number three.
Which, yeah, correct. And, and the plot actually is around 25, 30 feet higher than my house, so basically all the water's gonna go on that side, it's gonna create a bunch of problem for me now, I don't know if the, I don't know if the developer is willing to buy the property as it is, but at the moment, uh, I don't think it's right for us that we invested 10 years in that house and having no returns just because, you know, developer wants to make some money, I'm not opposed to nothing, but there's no, uh, retaining pounds, there's nothing actually gonna hold the amount of water that those roofs, those driveways and those roads gonna actually speed up the land.
Any questions, other gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Buck Crossing? Questions for the applicant, um, if you don't mind, maybe just talk a little bit about sort of stormwater controls, um, and the plan for buffers on the external edges of the subdivision or, and/or how lots might or might not be cleared for houses?
Okay, yep, yep, thank you for that, um, so first off, everything we do in here, what we've done to this point and what we will do moving forward, should we be approved tonight, will be, um, consistent with and in accordance with Johnston County standards for both road control, stormwater and our utilities will comply with NC DOT for all of our, uh, design and then also proceed with, with our roads being able to be turned over to NC DOT at some point after construction. Speaking specifically to the stormwater, we again, will be complying with the current stormwater, um, manual, the design manual and the statutes associated with that, um, and we will be dealing with our stormwater according to those requirements, which is, is a limitation on the amount of impervious area that we're allowed per lot, so we'll be, we'll be complying, we'll stay below the standard, we'll be meeting that and then that'll be, um, the final portion of that, that will be recorded, um, with each lot, they'll be giving us a specific amount of impervious area, um, and that, that's all the big calculation, including using the, um, the roadway and then any trail that we may decide to put in here or, or any other structure improvement, and, uh, as far as, um, as far as, uh, clearing out here, the, um, uh, again, the intention is that these, all of these lots will be greater than an acre, an acre and above, um, and so it's, it's not, uh, his goal is not to go in and create a, a clean cut area and, and grade everything, it's gonna be minimal, minimal land disturbing activity to be able to build these, these homes through there. Speaking to buffers, there's no, when we say buffers, two different, two different terminologies pop up to me, the first thing we, um, wanna talk about is environmental, so riparian buffer is usually one things that we have to deal with on this particular property there, um, we've had our, uh, wetland consultant go out and delineate wetlands, all the wetlands are confined to, basically confined to that bottom portion, which is the, um, north, the most north that, that stream that runs along there, um, so we don't have any buffer impacts, stream impacts, proposed wetland impacts throughout that. Um, the other part of buffer is what they were asking about, about the perimeter buffering, uh, there's, there's no, no plan or intention to, um, to add any additional, in, an additional buffer there, um, the, the lots that back up to, those lots are also large lots, you got a, a two-acre lot is number 40, a, a one and a quarter is 41, and two and a quarter-ish is 42, so, that cover what?
Yeah, I think so, one question about the stormwater.
Yes, sir.
And the gentleman's on the northwestern part of the property line, I believe I'm correct, does Moccasin Creek not flow to the east here toward Buckhorn Reservoir?
Yes, it's flowing.
So, any stormwater coming from the subdivision will not be flowing underneath Buck.
Correct, thank you.
Thanks, sir, any questions?
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, bring it back, staff.
When they cleared the land for the surveys, he did, they, he cleared the areas down, so I hope, um, it is correct that he's gonna keep the integrity of, of buffers and, uh, green space, uh, they were out there, they were on, right on the fence line, so he, they just went in and, and I contacted Mossy Oak and he said it wasn't his problem anymore that I should contact the buyer.
Okay, you, all right, thank you, I appreciate that, yep, bring it back, staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
We've, we've closed the public here, so now the board is deliberate, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Sasser, second by Mr. Crenshaw, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, Buck Crossing is approved, next on our agenda, we have three written decisions, I need authorization to sign, please, I'll need a motion, a second and a vote, uh, the first is Sunset Sala.
Make a motion to approve, sort of sign or whatever you do.
I'll say.
Approved the written decision.
Whatever you wanna do.
Motion to approve by Mr. Lovering, second by Miss, Miss, let's see, who's second?
Ms. Howard.
Okay, Ms. Howard, second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, next we'll do Woods at Meadow Downs.
Motion to approve is writ.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Crenshaw, second by Mr. Lovering, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and finally, Farm Field.
Motion to approve of the shred.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Sasser, second by Mr. Crenshaw, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else for us, Mr. Moore?
Our next meeting June 17th.
All right, motion, we are turned.
Thanks.